We have a forum here today. Anybody like to approve our agenda or move it forward?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second. All in favor? Show of hands. Okay. All right, there's a lot of good stuff and not enough people to hear the good stuff. Well, they're here, but we should be doing tap dances this week. It's still news. It's old news, but it's worth repeating. If you haven't heard, Bru Tech became the first school in the state to receive the STEM certification under Cognia's... I will get this closer. Okay? All right. Bru Tech became the first school in the state to achieve the STEM certification under Cognia's new standards. This is a real pat on the back to Bru Tech and to all involved with this. This is quite an accomplishment. Other good news, Carver High School just received a $10,000 donation from Brian Blue Smith. He made this donation award from the Honda Community Gift Program. He is a graduate of Carver and a former member of the band, given back to his alma mater. We want to thank Alabama State. Students visited through their ASU Read and Rise program. They went out and to various MPS classrooms this past week to read. And everywhere you look, there are good things happening in our schools, and I remain extremely excited about it. Dr. Moore, do we have some information?
Madam Chair, I wanted to make one amendment to your Bru Tech congratulations. It's the first STEM certification in the district, but it's number 30th in Alabama.
I did not have that.
Yes, ma'am. I just didn't want the information to be...
Okay, it's the first in Montgomery.
Yes, but it's the first in the River region, but it's number 30 in the state. Madam Chair.
Well, we're pleased as punch for them. Dr. Moore?
All right, so what we have on our agenda to receive is information. Number one, A, 5A. The Montgomery Education Foundation has sent me a letter requesting a delay in the opening of their charter school. They're requesting that they be delayed until the 21, 22 school year. And so I'm not asking you to vote on that tonight, but I'm making you aware of it. And at our next meeting, I will make a recommendation. As you know, under the law, you can extend if requested by a year. And so that is currently their request in writing, and I have received that. And at another meeting, I will make a recommendation to you in that regard. Okay, so next we have on our agenda, we have the teacher turnover. We, I believe, at our last meeting, someone made a request to have some certain information given, and so Kim Gillis is going to make that presentation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're going to start off by letting you know the title of this PowerPoint is Attracting, Recruiting, and Retaining MPS Personnel. And I think this comes because every time you get a personnel report, you see so many resignations in there. You can't do anything about retirements, but I think what you're going to find is there's not a lot we can do about resignations highly. I want to start by saying that Students First is a law that guides what we do. Initially, Students First told us that we had to let a teacher go within five days. She could give us a five days' notice, and we have to let them go. Well, the law has changed, and they're constantly revamping Students First. But I want to read that to you. That's not on the next slide, but... Teachers must notify the board within 30 calendar days of the beginning of school if they will not be returning. Vered to do so means that the teacher is guilty of unprofessional conduct, meaning the State Department may revoke or suspend the certificate. And that's Section 11 of Students First. Now, we have done some of that. But what we tell teachers is that if you're going to go, if you are going to go, we will go ahead and post, and we'll try to fill the position, and then release you in a timely manner. But we can't hold them up to 30 days. So that's the new law.
Kim, would you read that? Because I got confused. They have to tell you within the first five days, or when they're ready to quit, they have 30 days?
Initially, the law said, as long as they gave us a five days' notice, anytime during the year, I could leave. I had to release them in five days.
So anytime?
Anytime. It could be the first day of school. It could be the last day of school. It could be in the middle of the year, but the law changed. Now, I'm going to give this to you, Dr. Moore. That's what the new law says. And when you look at Students First, and there's sections. And I put Section 11 on there so you know exactly where it goes. So the purpose and goal statements are just as such. Provide information to the board about current practices that MPS uses to attract, recruit, and retain employees. And then the goal is to get feedback on how to continuously improve our practices as it relates to attracting, recruiting, and retaining employees. And if you notice down there, there's strategic plan goal, which is goal number two, and then the CAGIA domain. And the reason I put the purpose and the goal statement there is because we should always be about improving what we do. We should always be. We just went through a CAGIA review, and one thing that they talked about is being willing to continuously improve. So I'm hoping what will come out of this session is I'll get good feedback from you so that as an HR department, that we can continuously improve our practices. Right, attracting. What do we do to attract? First of all, MPS offers a variety of school types. We have traditional schools. We have magnet schools. We have alternative schools. We have primary grades. We have intermediate grades. Now, why do you say that's something that's attractive? Well, it is to people when they're applying for jobs. Not all of us are the same. Some people prefer a traditional school. I don't want to teach in a magnet. I want just a traditional school. Some people prefer those early years, so they want a kinder school, and we offer that. So one thing that we say when we're recruiting is that we have all of these options for you. Because the best thing we can do for any teacher who's entering our district is to provide a variety of options so that they can get in their best fit. We have a benefits package, and you all know about that. The teachers' benefits in this district and around the state is a great package, and we try to sell that to them. We tell them about Tier One and Tier Two employees. Fortunately, I'm a Tier One employee. Tier Two, they are working on, because there are some differences there. But we have a great benefits package, and we sell that when we're trying to attract new teachers and people to our district. We have nationally ranked schools, which is also attractive. You know, there are a lot of negative things out there, but the fact that we have nationally-ranked schools is a selling point. People are drawn to those kinds of things because they want to be a part of something good. We have supplements for teachers who coach. And I'm not just talking about athletic coaches. You know, we also supplement teachers who do academic coaching. And that's important to them because we know how much teachers need, right? So to get a supplement is really helpful if I enjoy one of those extra things. So that's also another way that we try to attract people to our district. We have, and how many people know about this? Student loan forgiveness. Most college kids, when they leave school, most of them are not on scholarships. But we also student loan forgiveness. Well, you have to work into a Title I school for X number of years, and then they can actually apply for student loan forgiveness. And our department actually manages that. They submit the paperwork, and we do the part that is required of us, and we submit it back, and hopefully they will get their student loans forgiven. And they do a portion at the time, a certain portion. But that's a great selling point, because then I'll end up with someone's debt, especially if I'm at a Title school. We have the Employee Assistance Program, and you all know that as EAP. And most people think that's just when someone has a problem, if they're going through alcoholism or something. But they also do honest things and great things, which is counseling our teachers. And they provide financial services to help them to manage money and those things. So that's a great selling point, and there's no cost to the employee. Our district, thanks to you who approved that, we offer that to our teachers. And it's really at a minimum cost. If I told you how much it costs every month, you would be shocked. For the number of employees that we have, we pay about $3,000 every month, and that's it, for all 4,000 employees, which to me is awesome. We have a competitive salary for principals, and we know how that came about. Let's just be honest. We know the state gave them a raise, and we matched that, made sure that it was equal across the board. But it is a competitive salary for principals. We were really struggling to get principals to come to the system because their pay was so low. But now it is not. It is very competitive. We allow employee petitions. Now, that does exclude those demands, but what that is, is we tell teachers, if you're coming to our district and they have small children, you can actually have your child at your school, and if it's not a magnet, they have to apply, or somewhere close, which is really an attraction, because then maybe they're going to have to provide for a daycare, which is really an attractive thing for them. And you know, I didn't think that one was really attractive until you started really talking to people, and you know that that is an attraction. Because if I have a small child and I'm new to a district, I don't want to send my child off somewhere that I don't know. But having them somewhere close is really an attractive piece. Then we partnered with UWA, that's the University of West Alabama, for scholarship opportunities. A couple of years ago, they actually offered scholarships for teachers who wanted to get advanced degrees, which was really awesome. It was down to reduce costs. And so we sell that. We say, if you want to go get your masters, we have this agreement with UWA, and many of them took advantage of that. So that's the attracting piece of it. Do we have questions about attracting?
Explain the partner with UWA. What is UWA? Is that online?
Yes. They can do much of the coursework online. I mean, it's just certain areas that they actually come through HR, and we set them up with UWA, and they offer them scholarships. And many people didn't take advantage of it when we had it, but UWA is constantly reaching out to us for some different things. You're going to see some of those in this one. Recruitment. Now, that's where this starts. You all know that we attend job and career fairs across the state. We go to a variety of places. And so when we have our tables set up, you'll see some of those things in there to promote our school. So even when we're going for the fair, you may see some of the trinkets we have in that box, and those are yours to keep. And it says MPS on it. So even if we're out of sight, and hopefully we're not out of mind, because if you need a hand sanitizer, you spray, guess what? We're right there on your back. If you have to blow your nose, guess what? It says MPS on it. If you need to sign something, guess what's on your pen? Montgomery Public Schools. So we provide that. We set up. And the thing that we do with that that I think is awesome, and now many districts we've noticed really good business, is we take a principal or two with us. We look at which principals are in the greatest needs. For example, if I have a school that has seven openings, but I have one that has two openings, I'm going to take the principal with the seven openings to the job or career fair with me so that they can actually do their own recruiting. Now, the HR directors are recruiting for the system, but that principal is actually having time, because I have so many openings to fill, to actually concentrate on my school. And when we interview people, we're thinking about all of the schools in the district, but that principal can focus on just his or her school. So that's the job and career fairs at the colleges and universities. We use Searchsoft. You all know what that is. That's the state's online platform where people anywhere can actually apply. We use Handshake. That's something a couple of years ago that the colleges and universities introduced, so that they can go on, and we can send out our jobs to Handshake, and people at colleges and universities can actually apply. LinkedIn, and I'm sure you've heard that. Class, Troops to Teachers. And actually, we have one teacher right now that we got through Troops to Teachers. We use social media platform, and we recently added Indeed to recruit the most qualified personnel. We're trying to reach out as far as we can to get people to apply to MPS. You all have heard in years past, we hosted an MPS job fair, and we've done that. Some people questioned that, but it was an awesome opportunity for our principals to sell their schools themselves. They set up the actual booths. It's decorated on all of their garb, and guys, it is a fun sight to see. They are so competitive. They are. You would think that their school is the best place in the world until you go to the next table, because then that's the next best place. But we've done have to try to attract people here. We go to job fairs, but I think it says something different when we host our own. Then we network with other HR personnel. Our HR directors are a member of ASPA, and that's the professional organization for HR people. And we actually network, and we say, for example, we have a group of friends in Mobile. We know them by name. If they know that they have a good teacher moving to the area, one will call me up and say, Kim, or Deidra, Anna, John, this person is hum, she's awesome. You need to try to reach out to her, and I'll say, give me phone numbers, send me a resume. And we reach out to them. So networking is something that works really well for us. And we actually go to two of those a year. We do one in the fall. It's called Fall Drive-In. And then we have the Winter Drive-In as well. We place interns in schools to possibly employ them. The CFPIL is really responsible for interns, but what we've decided, and we did this a couple of years ago, is let's not just put interns anywhere. Let's put them where they're needed. For example, if X school has a math vacancy, why not put the math intern at that school? The principal can then actually see that person teach and then possibly employ them. So we're real strategic in how we place interns now. And I think that's a smart thing to do. I'm more likely to hire somebody I've seen teach than someone I have not taught, and that's the goal of that. We hosted a library media fair. You notice that says new right there. There's five universities that partnered with us. That actually happened today at around 5:00, I think it started, and we have HR personnel there. And the reason we've done that is because we have a shortage on people who actually want to be library media specialists. Well, because it's not just checking out books anymore. It's more technology-based. So that's a little harder than looking to read and teach kids how to, you know, check out things in the library. It's technology-based. So we've partnered with five universities, and they're actually working. Allison, like me, with our department with MPS, and the HR directors are actually doing that today. I'm sorry that I'm missing it, but I told them just take me a lot of pictures.
What are the five universities?
I know one is, believe it or not, the University of Alabama. And let me just send those to you. I remember the University of Alabama because I was just really shocked that they would partner with us, you know? Because if there's a distance, and they have a lot of kids right there. But we have five universities to say, yeah, we're in. We understand. We get it. But that's part of MPS's job, is to reach out. Even when they don't reach out, we can reach out. Because sometimes those thoughts are not there for them. They don't know our needs, but we do. And I'll send those to you very shortly after the presentation. We network with university department heads to connect with students and non-education majors who may want to teach. Well, what we've noticed at the fairs, and you heard me talk about the job fairs, is that when I first started in HR, you go to a job fair, and you have to turn so many people down because there would be so many education majors, especially elementary eight. Now, when we go, there's so limited kids who are actually majoring in education. So what we do is we talk to the universities, department heads, the ones that we kind of buddy up with to say, if you have a student who's strong, and maybe they don't get a job, or they're not sure what they really want to do with that degree, maybe they would be an excellent teacher. But we talk to them to see if they can kind of steer us in that direction so that we can possibly get some people who may really want to teach and be good at it. We don't just want a warm body. We want someone who has a college degree that we can actually train and teach to be a teacher, and then get them certified. And then employee referrals. This is, a person in my office kept saying, you know, when you go to get an apartment, or you go to a doctor, you get a fee if you refer someone. And I said, well, you know, we don't have any money, right? And she said, yeah, but I think they would just appreciate the referral. So we do take employee referrals. Just recently, about two weeks ago, I had a principal in my office and say, hey, when I worked in X district, I have someone who is going to relocate here. Can I like to refer that person? What that means, though, is you still have to apply. It doesn't guarantee you a job. You still got to apply. You have to have all of the same requirements, but at least someone else is reaching out, other than just the HR folks. It's a few of us, but it's many employees. And if they have friends to pull them in to say, if you want to teach, we can probably get you certified based on some other things. Questions about recruitment? And in your bag, you'll see some of the little trinkets. You'll also see something I talked about previously. There's an EAP card. That card is in there because we give those out as well, not to say you think something is wrong with you. But like I said, it is an attraction piece, and so we give those out. We also send those out to all of the schools so that principals can have them on hand. And when they run low, they do call to say, we need more cards. And one good thing, because they are our partner, they usually don't charge us for cards or anything like that, because they appreciate the business as well. Right, retaining. And guys, I think out of all of this, this is probably the hardest part. We provide mentoring for new teachers and new principals. Through Debbie Cook's office, which is PD, she provides a new teacher orientation. Now, you've heard me talk about new hire orientation before. And we separated the two, because I felt like if she's doing new teacher training, I really want her to focus on training. I don't want her to focus on paperwork and the rules and regulations. HR can do that. So we separated it, so that new teacher training is just that. She can train teachers on the things that they need to do. And we also have mentors for all of our new principals. They are actually assigned a mentor. They have to sign a contract. And they have certain things. Once they contract, not anything, being able to say that I will do the following things. Have to spend X number of time with this new principal. I have to be able to talk to them even after hours. I have to be able to show them some new techniques. Have to make sure things are done in a timely manner. Have to be able to come do a walkthrough if I need to at their school. I need to be able to be their sounding ear, and someone who will keep it confidential, because you don't want to have a mentor who tells everyone. You want to feel comfortable saying, this is my situation. Can you help me? So we try to pair them up in a way that it works. We try to put them, if it's a middle school principal, we try to choose a seasoned middle school principal. That doesn't always work, because of, you know, people being new to the district might have more middle school new principals than seasoned ones. So we try to work that out the best that we can. And we also look at personality matches, too, how they can kind of balance each other out. And because we feel like when we know the principals pretty much, that's easy to balance out. But we don't just do that and say, let it fly. Dr. Moore saw my list, and she actually changed one or two on there and said, uh-uh, that's not going to work. Uh-uh, you know better. And so we made me change. We support teachers who hold a provisional certificate, help them pass the required test. And that's new as well. What we've noticed is that we used to worry about teachers passing the Praxis test in math. Believe it or not, fellow elementary teachers are struggling to pass the Praxis test. So what we've done as a pilot is, what, January 6, which was our PD day, we actually had some seasoned math teachers, and even one of our principals who holds a pure math degree, to come and help those teachers who are on a provisional certificate, means an alternative certificate, to help them start preparing to pass the Praxis. We provided all of their study materials, and that did come out of the HR budget. We provided everything that they could possibly need so that we can get them ready to pass the test. Because what happens? We offer an emergency certificate. You can't have it more than one year, but what happens after that? Well, if they haven't passed the Praxis, you know what happens. You can't. So the good thing to do is to help them pass the test. And they actually work after hours. We pay the teachers a very small fee, but they're willing. One teacher actually said to us, I would do this for free. And I was like, be careful what you say. He said, because what I'm trying to do is to build my colleagues up. Because of, and this person is out of high school. He said, because if at the elementary and the middle, they have good math instruction, it's going to make my job easier. So if it means me helping this teacher, by all means, let me help. And I said, so you see, I'm doing it for a reason. I don't have to. So, and I get that. I really get that. One thing else that we're doing to retain teachers, because teachers are nervous in the past, because we've always done a blanket non-renewal, and we know that. But because of the teacher shortage, we can't really afford to do that. So we've had no mass non-renewals, meaning anyone non-tenured for about five years, which is awesome. And that starts to speak mounds to people that we're trying to keep you. We're not just non-renewing you because you're non-tenured. When you do that, what happens is you lose your great teachers. They're not going to sit around and wait. If you call them back, they're going to go to all of these districts around us or wherever they have family. So we try not to do any non, we do no mass non-renewal, some of us mandatory. I was a little nervous last year when we had to do a reduction course. I just knew we were going to have to do a mass non-renewal. But we had a brainchild, Dr. Moore, I'll give you that credit, to say, you don't have to do it that way. Let's think about how we can do it. Through a lot of thought and consideration and moving things around, we did not do a mass non-renewal. Just because you're non-tenured did not mean that we had to lose you, which is a blessing. We allow for transfers to better suit strengths, and that is timely sensitive. Every year, we give out intent forms. And on that intent form, we have something called an internal transfer period. If you've worked at this school X number of years, and it's just not the best fit for you, then we allow that. We allow you to move to another school, but you have to be interviewed by that principal, and you have to fit within that timeline. And the reason that we give them a timeline is because, folks that gets to school, we need for faculties to be settled. Nobody wants to have to figure out, guess what? I just lost a teacher five days before school opens because we've allowed an internal transfer. So we put a date and a timestamp on that. It has to be this time. You have to have an opening, and then you can actually transfer. We decided that, because principals every year, and I have AEA in house. That's one of the halls that I get every year about, you sure this is a good day? Well, this year, we have principals actually helping us pick that day. This is the drop-dead date that we can do this. So I think having their buy-in would make it a little smoother. Like I said, this is about continuous improvement, improvement for us. So we are trying to improve by being listening as well. And then we try to promote within and grow our own teachers and leaders. And guys, I did bring names, because I'm not supposed to call names and things like that, but I will say this. This is the first year where we have truly grown some teachers. We have teachers who were secretaries, but had a degree, but didn't know what to do with it. I, we have one that was a secretary somewhere in the district, and she says, well, I have another new degree, but I just need some help pass some tests. I was like, okay, that's the easy part. So not that we don't value our secretaries, but with a teacher shortage, that's awesome. And she's not thonged anymore. We have several like that that have degrees that we have gotten certificates for. That's promoting within, and I think that's important. It's empowering people, and it's helping them financially as well. Questions about retaining? All right, data collection. All right, we have an open-door policy for any employee leaving the district to discuss concerns with HR personnel. We make modifications when possible, and I'll explain that. We don't have a page that we put in their files, because you can't just put things in people's files. If you want something in your file, there's a process that you go through that. We have an open-door policy, and we've done that ever since. I let people come in and talk to me, and the same with the other directors. We actually do do exit interviews, but it's on pencil and paper for our notes to say, uh, we got situations here. And then we discuss that in the city. That's why you see we make modifications when possible. Sometimes those transfers you see in there is because we've made a modification. We don't want to lose this person, but they're just not in the best fit for whatever reason. Most of the time, when people come in our offices, they won't talk to us unless we guarantee that we're not going to put something to write in, because they feel like it's going to be a blinge, especially if it has something to do to the school. Because what I hear all the time is, they talk to each other. And if you put this in my file, that file is open for any other administrator, and that's going to be a blinge to me. So we do allow them to talk to us, and we're going to continue to do that. It's great to do something, and you'll see when I get to that in just a minute. It's great to do something, paper, pencil, something online. But it's also good, sometimes people just want to be heard. They just want to be heard. And we have that open-door policy so that they can be heard in a very non-threatening way. Now, if they want to write it in their resignation, we allow them to do that. That's their right, because it's their resignation letter. It's their retirement letter. And we encourage that. If you want it to go on file, this is which way you have to do that. And they can put it in their resignation letter, and then that does become part of their file, because the resignation is something that can become part of the file. We read and review resignation letters to address systematic needs. And we do read those things. Sometimes they don't want to talk. I just, here's my letter. You read it. We read it, and we say, okay, these are the situations. And we look for patterns of behavior. You can't just say, because it's one incident, that it's a systemic problem. But we can at least look into it and see if we have some potential for some things we need to fix. We survey new teachers. One of the HR directors in my office came up with one year. I know we don't do the teacher orientation, but we do the higher orientation. I like to survey teachers to see kind of what they need and what they want. And he's done that, and we have survey results as far as that is concerned as well. Then this is brand-new. I listened to what Ms. Smith said, and AEA told me. They told me a way to get around what I was trying to do. Exit data collection via the Google platform, and that's brand-new. And I'm going to actually show you what that is. It's not something I can put in their file, but it can give us good data to show us where we are and what we need to do. So Catherine, if you go to the other, I'm going to show you the forum, and I'm going to actually, this is the way that we created this. I could do a split screen, but instead of doing that, I think this makes it easier for all of us. What you're going to get is what the actual Facebook interview looks like. What you're going to get is what the actual paper interview looks like. Like I said, this will not be a part of their data. But it will be data that's ongoing and can be collected, okay? I'll wait till you get it before I start copying. I know you know about it, but I know you've seen what we've done since then. All right, Kathleen, before this is all over, let me explain. What you have is the question that any time someone submits a letter of resignation, what we decided to do is to take the last set of resignations, because you know we had quite a few of them, and send it to those employees to see if they would do it. So you notice they have these questions. Notice there's no place for name, none of that. But you notice we got eight responses that they're getting sent really quick, which is good. So we can keep this and you can actually see their responses. If you'll click on responses, I'll tell you what it says so far. All right, so this is the data we'll give you tonight, all right? If you look at it, Kathleen, I'm going to need you to hover, roll it up just a little bit. I need you to hover over the pie chart. If you see that, first of all, the first question asked, and you have a copy of that, ask, you know, what department or what level? And it tells you the high school, middle school, elementary school. And then it gives us the data of how many people responded in those areas. Does that make sense so far? Then position. Go down. If you notice, everyone who responded to this was a teacher. So a hundred percent of the data is just what teachers thought. And these are eight teachers who actually resigned. Now, do I know who they are? I don't. Because we tell them, because you resigned, you really won't have access to your NPS email after that. So they can send it back in any form. This is a Google document so they can access it anyway, you know, from any place they want to. All right, length of employment, just roll it just a little bit. We kind of need to know how long they worked here, you know, so we kind of get a feel for them. They could be here less than one year, one to four years, five to nine years, or more than 10 years. And if you look at the graph, the green and the blue are the highest ones. So we have more than 10 years and then less than one year and then some things in the middle. And if you hover, Kathleen, if you'll hover one more time for me. You'll see that, and I'm not going to touch it because I know who. Three people, which makes up thirty-seven point five percent of those who are more than 10 years. And if you hover here, it was three people here as well. But if you hover here, that was only one person and that was only one person. So three plus three is six, one is seven, one is eight, and that's the total of eight responses. If that makes sense. So you know that it actually matters. Right, the next question, you can see in your packet, you have that. Your reason for leaving. And we thought this is what, you really wanted us to pay attention to. Why are you leaving? And we came up with some standard reasons and then actually did an internet search about what would be good reasons for people to leave or what are the standard reasons that they wanted to leave. And if you look at those, the largest one, for better opportunity. Only three people said it because we only had eight people, but that's thirty-seven point five percent. Then the next heights would be these two, health and family circumstances. And the other one is dissatisfaction with the supervisor. We have nothing like that. And working conditions.
So I have to ask this.
Those are the highest.
Why only eight?
Well, we sent them out to everybody, but only eight responded. Because we can't make them respond.
I got you.
If you can't make them respond, all we can do is put it out there for them. Because it is a, you know, it's a survey.
So were these people who left recently that we had the eight responses from? But this will be a continuous?
This will be every time, what we decided that makes more sense, don't wait on a board meeting. Because you really can't stop them from resigning. So the best thing to do is when they, when we get a resignation letter, go ahead and send it to them right then. Because then we know they're waiting on board approval, so maybe they'll be encouraged to fill it out. That's the plan.
You send the link right away?
I send the link right away. All right?
And this is something that they can do on the telephone?
Yes, it is. Because it's a Google Doc and where you can access a Google Doc. And we, if you go back and look at, I think on your paper, it says at the top that you are anonymous. And we thought that was really important to put there because we really wanted people to respond. And I'm going to be honest with you, the first day we put this out, we were shocked, we didn't know what was going to happen. The first day we had several answers right off. And I was like, okay, there being an issue. And they're already gone, it's already been board approved. So I'm thinking if we do it even before then, we might even get more responses. But we're going to send it to everyone who we have an email address for that we can send it to.
Is there not a way we can go an extra mile and think, you know, since you looked at better opportunity as the biggest one and then of course, working conditions was fairly large too? Is there not a way that we can not find out where the better opportunity was or what specific working conditions they're talking about?
I got it. We actually thought of that, Dr. Keith, and we said, make it short and simple. But remember I said, this is about continuous improvement and especially for our HR department. If that's something you'd like for me to add, I could put a comment section. And if they'd like to comment?
I wish they would, because that, I think that would be a good tell-all for us. And we could see that.
Right, and that's easy to do. I mean, these are, like I said, continuous improvement, I am constantly growing because I'm trying to learn to do something new. So we'll add something, you'll need to let me know where you want the comments added on which sections. And then I can build that in.
Well, those do definitely. I think better opportunity where, because at least we know what we're competing with. And then also the working conditions. You know, is it policy? Is it something? Because I think that sends a message to us. Is it leadership at your school? You know, what is it?
I agree.
I think you're not going to have, I mean, I agree with you, there should be a comment section. I don't think you'll have as many responses to that. But it's, it's good to have it there because any response you get is something that you can use for improvement.
Absolutely. Guys, you've got to remember, this is our first draft and our first attempt to try to satisfy the needs of the district. So we're really open to this. We're open to making it better. Because it's not something we just want to do. We wanted to be helpful to our district. We wanted to be helpful as an HR department. If they say that it's because HR is not doing, then we need to do something different, whatever it is. One young lady stayed after the board meeting last week. She said, I was one of those resignations who was talking about it. But I told my HR director, but I told her, don't tell anybody. I said, we understand that, we get it. And hers was location because of a sick family member. She said, but I don't want that attached to my name and I don't want that in my file. So please don't y'all start doing that. And I said, no, we would never do that. Because that's kind of an invasion of their privacy as well, especially if it goes to something like.
Even, even a comment section or something that said, what would you have suggested, you know, to make us better?
Absolutely.
It might be nice to hear from that teacher, you know?
Dr. Keith, would you kind of send us something with those thoughts? So you kind of script those down later. All right, then the next section.
And before you leave there, are you going to be, are you going to be a running list by semester, by year? So will this number go from eight to sixteen next month, thirty-two the next, okay?
I'm going to make it, because we're in the second semester of the year, I think it needs to be a running list of eight. Because that gives us a good look at where we are at this point. Next year when we start it off, maybe we'll do it by every nine weeks here. That's, that's up for us to decide on.
Thank you.
But I think at this point, it's already there. I don't see why we would chop it up more than that. All right, then the next section said, would you return to work with Monday in public school? We thought that was an important question because what, what many people don't realize is that we have people come in and go, we're really here. Many of the files, we just go to the files that are inactive and pull their file up and just, just bring it back to life. Because people do come back. And to me, this is, is very telling. The yes without reservation is pretty small. But the yes, I'm clicking on it, I'm sorry Kathleen. We had one person to say yes without reservation. I'd come back, just no issues, I would be back, I'm leaving for whatever reason. But then click on the orange. The orange says yes under different circumstances. And you notice there's seven there, so that seven and one does make out eight. And we do check it to make sure none of our graphs are off. Yes, under different circumstances. I think that's where we need.
Yes, comment section.
So what would be those different circumstances? If you chose yes under different circumstances, what are those circumstances?
Just say, please explain.
That's a perfect place for that.
If you notice that no one said, oh, the eight, and I understand it's just eight, but no one said not at all. So to me, that's very telling as well. That tells us that we have very transient students and we also got very transient teachers. You can't, okay? We go for that, everybody just went low. All right. How would you rate the following in relation to your job? Using a scale of one, five to five, you'd rate the highest, okay? And it says communication within your school or department. And you'll see how many people chose a two, a one, a three, a four, a five. And you can see those answers. All right? Morale in your department. And it gives us information on the morale. You notice there, we did have a one there and a one there. So that tells us some good information as well. And then finally, salary and benefits and training. So it gave us some information on how you would rate us. The directors, we toyed around with some other rating things, but we felt like this one was important because it gives us some insight on, is it a communication problem? Is it the morale in the school or in the district? Is it because we don't provide enough training or maybe even too much training?
What, so what's, was, what do you think that was? The high one in training, was that, are they saying that we had a lack or that we had too much? What do you?
Orange.
The orange? Because I thought we had.
They gave us a three. They said we were pretty good with training.
Oh, okay, got you.
Yeah. If it's high, that means a high number of people. That sounds okay.
Okay, all right.
I think it's a two.
That's a two.
I think it's a two. It's not yellow, it's orange.
Is it? Yeah, I can see it right. Because I think we're missing that bar. It's hard to see on the screen. So, that's where we are at this point with just the, what we tried to accommodate for what we needed as far as an exit interview. This way, it does not violate anyone's, anyone's personal business, but it also gives us some good information. If we continue this with the modifications that we're going to make to this, I think it will help us grow our district. Remember, I say this over and over again, we just got off of a topic here for review, but we decided that we're not going to wait five years and say, guess what? It's almost time to get that review again. We're going to do something every year as a district. And I'm not just talking about HR. We should be doing something every year to continuously improve our practice. And if you see, there are some new things up there that we're trying. And some old things, because we don't throw out old things, so some old things are good. Can you go back to the? At this point, I'd like to see what else can, would you all like to see?
Well, Madam President, I would like to make a comment. It is good to see this because as board members, we do get a lot of phone calls. The, and I understand that there's no exit forms in the justification for them not being there. The reason I ask is because in a meeting that it said that it was there. And sitting on the Culture and Climate Committee, we often talk about this and the overall impact that it has on teacher morale, which was one of the questions. The impact that it has on students, the impact that it has on achievement. And so I thought that that information was so pertinent to see why, you know, our, especially on the retention end, why is it that people are leaving us? Because we obviously see what the outcomes are when it comes to student achievement. So it's refreshing to know that there is something there and that you all are willing to, that you're opening it up further board to add some additional depth to it. Because it's needed. We are competing. It is hard to get teachers to come to this district because of various labels that's been placed upon it. But I think it's a good district and anytime you can improve what you're doing, how can you go wrong with that?
One thing we learned in our position at the time, one thing we learned, I, I would, not that we didn't know, but sometimes it's given someone puts it in the face, you know, to make you remember. Is that if you don't continuously improve, you know, always think that you've always got it. You're going to stay stagnant. But we don't want to be a district that stays stagnant. This way, with this tool that we're using, this is something I can share with anybody. It's because it's anonymous. It doesn't have a name on it. It's not in their personnel file, so they don't feel like it's being violated. I think this is easy to do. Yes, it does need some modification, but this is our staff that are trying to make it better, trying to give you the information that you need as board members to be able to answer those difficult questions and to have some data to base some things on. So hopefully this is helpful. If anyone wants to shoot me some suggestions on how to make this better, please do. Send it to my email, because if you just call and tell me, I promise you, you won't remember it. I'm at that age, I probably was wrong. So if you send me a email, I can make modifications. Now, don't get upset if I don't put it just like you want it, because I want to look at it from a legal eye as well to make sure we're not saying anything inappropriate. We don't want to say anything that's going to give us any kind of, any kind of legal implications for it. So if I tweak your question a little bit, it's not because I didn't like your question. I just need to make sure that you don't have a situation.
I want to say this. This, this exit interview, this is a great tool. I, I think it's a really well done. It does need a few things that people can say, but to capture some of it is a very vast improvement.
And this is probably very similar to what Mr. Roller was asking, but will there be some kind of timestamp so that we will know that in 2019 this occurred, but in 2020?
Yes. Because it is a Google Doc, you can see when it's timed. We can actually see when the actual people start rolling in their answers. And if you want that, we're going to actually be displaying on the chart. That's an easy bit.
Two questions. Okay, one simple, I just wasn't taking notes, but I asked about it. What is the name of that program that pays for teachers to, to get a higher degree?
Okay, it's not, it's not a program. UWA was providing scholarships.
Okay. Tell them what UWA stands for.
West Alabama.
Okay.
They provide scholarships for our hard to feel heroes. The unfortunate thing is they stopped because now we need people to be there.
Okay. The other one, you're going to think I'm beating a dead horse and I know you gave me a copy of this, okay? And, and just to me, how I interpret things. Because you said we are bound by students first regardless. And we're seeing, especially in January, February, just mega resignations, bunches, okay? Just let me finish my sentence. If, when you, when you look at this top definition, it says, teachers must notify the board within thirty calendar days of the beginning of school. All right? So that's what I was asking, is they have to, they have to, before school starts in August, they have to tell us. So when we have that many, am I, is it fair to say, when we have that many resignations, where it says failure to do so means that this teacher is guilty of unprofessional? All those that are on there are guilty.
No.
Of, okay, because you, because then on the other hand, you're saying, well, they can resign or, or excuse me, at any time. So I'm not.
So look back at that. And Kim, you, you, it used to be like five days before school started or else you had to get the superintendent's permission. Then they changed it to what you see there, thirty days before school starts. But after school starts, another timeframe kicks in.
Okay, so that's.
And so they, but they can do it, it doesn't, we can't hold them beyond that.
Okay, okay, that's, okay. My, my interpretation of that was just.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't hold them, it just has that thirty day notice. But one.
Dr. Keith, I actually found you that in the same way. I said, this is the beginning of the school.
Yeah.
I actually had an attorney that called me back today to say, can't be misreading that. I said, no, I don't think I am. And they said, any thirty days will do. That's supposed to be flexible for me. I said, well, you want me to say that?
Okay. Yeah, I think they do because I've, I've seen this before and I, every time I have the same question.
Yeah. So, and one other thing I want to say in addition to what Kim has done with you, has, you know, given you a really good report. But also, I would like for you, at some point, when you get your, your list of resignations and it'll name the people who are resigning, if you look over on another page, you'll see where someone else is being hired that's replacing that person. So even though you have a list of resignations, you also have an additional list that says, these are new hires and they're replacing the other person who had resigned. So we, it's kind of a balancing act all the time. So we're not having people who just leave and we don't ever replace them. Because on, sometimes on both of those reports, you'll see resignations and then you'll see a new hire and this is replacing Miss so-and-so who resigned.
And the reason for that thirty day. And, and the reason for that thirty day decision, first of all, there's a posting law. You have to post jobs for at least seven days. So when they could give us a five day notice, we don't even have time to post. They can be gone. So we're sitting with our teacher or subs in the room. So at least with this, we have thirty days to get posted, to hold some interviews, and possibly hire. That's why we put the replacing in there, so you can see that we are trying to replace them. Can we always find someone? Nope, but then we try, and we look under every rock we can find, we do. But guys, I, I, I keep saying this, that we don't want to just have anyone in the classroom. We want the best that we can possibly find. But yes, our kids deserve that. Um, I also want you to, to think about when we bring this and mail, I know, I know you've sent your, it's calling, you do it all the time, emailing all of that. But when we say thirty days, please tell them that we need those thirty days. If we can find someone before the thirty days is up, if we can find someone in two weeks, we'll happen to let them go. But if we hold them for those thirty until we can find, that, that's good for our kids if they're gonna be productive in the classroom. Now, if we see that they're doing some other things and really not teaching kids, yes, we most definitely wanna go ahead and let them go. Because no one deserves a teacher who's this young in the classroom life. So that, that is a balancing act. And one thing I thought about is that we're having all of these people to resign, but they're going somewhere, right? They're going to a place where somebody else is resigning. So it's happening across the state. It is. And when I talk to my colleagues, we talk about, okay, this needs to leave this time, this needs to leave that time. And most of them say, you're such a big district, I don't know how you control it. I said, well, you really can't control it. You just stick with what the law says. And do the best that you possibly can for our kids.
I have one other question. Excuse me. Since we're doing data collection on the, um, um, the staff that's leaving, is there any collection of data that we're using for our current employees to just kinda get a feel of how everything's going? And if so, and I don't know if I'm outside of my lane, so let me know, is that something that the vo, board can review just to look and just see how things are going, trudging along?
And I guess, do you commonly do something?
Right.
And then the new teacher survey that one of the HR directors sent out a couple of years ago this time to see how's it going at this point? Um, cause we thought we needed to get a pulse on how they're doing. That's the only thing I'm aware of. I don't know if PD does something or some other agency, that's something we can take into.
Yeah.
Something we can probably develop.
Back in, oh, I forget what year, maybe twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, um, a different superintendent was in at the time, and I remember it was something through Tennessee. I forgot what it was called. But there was a survey that was sent out to current employees just to kinda gauge, almost like a culture and a climate kinda thing.
Cause it's like a satisfaction survey.
That would be given to all teachers, okay? Because back in my day, you, you know, I'm just telling you, when, when I was at Lee, the principal made it a habit to give it to, to certain, you know, the ones that liked him. Okay? I never, I never got the survey.
Let me say this, now, we do do a bunch of surveys where, especially since we, we have TPI here, there are certain surveys that are part, that we do for teachers, for, um, students, for parents, for community. And also Title I, many times we'll do a survey for the Title I schools as well. Um, we would just need to do a balancing act, especially if we're surveying people to death.
That's what I was about to say. It doesn't have to be every year, but if you do something like every five years.
Put that in writing, so I can look at that and see if like, best use my department on Dr. Pete to, to what you're saying, is we could always send it just like I'm doing with this. We can send it to all. We don't have to send it to the principal. We could send it to the principal, or we can send it to MPS all, and you know that everyone has an opportunity to do it. But then we probably kind of would you do like that to the real life? And then we'll decide, or by tomorrow, we'll decide, if we're belonging to the same direction.
And I have one other question about another slide. It was dealing with, I think it was under retention. Can you go back to that slide? In there, it talked about, um, try to promote within and grow our own teachers and leaders. Now, I know we have the Principal Academy.
We also have one for Assistant Principals.
And Assistant Principals as well. I didn't know about that one. Um, what are some things that we're doing? Uh, well, let me go back to the Principals Academy. I know we get a lot of principals from other areas. And that's been some, um, things that I've been hearing from people who are really invested in education to become leaders, joining our Principal Academies, but yet feel a little left out of the process. And I'll have to spill, go into the narrative, but you know, how can we promote, uh, get them to not view us as a, you gotta be in the clique in the circle, but that your work and your merit really means something, and that you are being noticed? Like, how can, what do we do to lay that stereotype to rest?
I think it's, we're gonna be saying what we do every day. And I think it's our mouth that is making a difference. I serve on very few interview panels at this point, so. You chose, I know other people don't serve on, Dr. Burke and T.J., I serve on certain ones. But I serve on very few, other people opportunities to serve on these panels and to help, to continue to make a good selection, to bring better regulation for you. But I think part of it is what we do, uh, what we say, and how we confront things. And I think it has to be a mindset, you know, a mindset change for us to. A lot of people don't like the things that we require. Um, for example, the prerequisites that we require for people, but those prerequisites are therefore a purpose. Um, we have struggling schools, sometimes a new, brand new principal who's never been a principal before is not the best fit for that school. And all of that usually comes out in interviews, because the interview questions are structured. Not, we don't just have a blanket number of, of questions. We have questions that are specific to that department or to that school, to make sure that we're finding the most qualified. And I think it's what we say and what we do to promote that, that, that idea that we are transparent, that we are looking at everyone. Just like I said, the people that we've hired begin just for our teachers, these are not people that apply. That's us asking questions. In a building, asking a question, just making casual conversation, cause we're there for some, for another reason, and the teachers, and the secretary says, I have a question. But I don't know. So I think knowledge is truly power. We need to put it out there, the things that we can do, the things that we can say, maybe. We need to vamp up our website to say some things about how we promote our teachers. And that Academy was not a Principals Academy. It was called the Inspiring Leaders Academy, so we took Assistant Principals and Principals. Um, the Principals had a different cohort than the Inspiring ones. And you know that Inspiring, it could be a central office person who wanted to go back to be a principal. And we really come out, yeah, several central office people that participated in the Inspiring Leaders, because a leader is not just a principal. It's anybody that's in a leadership role. So we opened it up to anyone who was willing to learn some leadership skills. And we had quite a few, um, applications, and then we have to apply for that. Because if I have five more people to apply, I can't support five hundred. We weren't an ATM at the time, they told us what number they could have. And we made sure we read through the, um, applications. We had some outside people to get the applications as well, to kinda help us judge who would be the best candidates. And that was called Inspiring Leaders, for anyone who wants to get the answers.
And the promoting the teachers, do we still have the, um, and my son's best friend went through this, um, program with us, the Teachers Academy? Uh, um.
At maybe JP or my wife, I'm just guessing.
Uh, actually, he was in the Magnet School, and, but he participated in the program. So is that something, regardless of where it is, is it something that we're promoting in our schools, in our high schools?
In some of us, our schools. You know, every school has a focus. One school may be math and science, one may be, maybe it's IT, you might have one, we had, we had an educational, um, academy. It was not a very strong academy, because kids were not interested. And you can't, you can't have a teacher who's on the side of people.
What were some of the barriers you think that made the students kinda? And I don't know if that would even fall onto you, I, I really don't know where that li, lies, but has there ever been, you know, any promotion from the district to our high school students to draw them into those areas of teaching?
Not now or where.
Then it might be something we might.
So, let me, let me add, although we don't as a school system necessarily have that component, we do work with colleges and universities through our curriculum department, and where they go, uh, they are going to STEM camps, and they are involved in that area that would entice them to become teachers. Math, science, or whatever, especially math and science right now. So we have partnerships with different colleges and universities that actually provide scholarships. They provide trips. Uh, we just, uh, got something recently, this week, from a group that's gonna work with, um, helping, uh, some students go, I think to Florida to be involved in some STEM workshops and be there for about ten days. Some other students are gonna go to, um, the, uh, Space and Rocket Center Space Camp, um, to enhance their skills in sciences and math, and, and hopefully entice them to become teachers. But we do have partnerships, but I don't think we focused. I think the old group, there used to be Future Teachers of America, where, uh, yeah, that's how we were talking about.
And at one point, they had a teaching man.
Future Teachers of America, where a, a lot of the high schools would have a group that they were operating as a club, and it actually supported the idea of if you wanna be a future teacher, or a future farmer, or a future whatever, that, that was a part of it. So I think that club type thing is still in existence. We could look into it and see if that's something a school might want to, um, pick up and do. I mean, some of the more rural systems, I think, still use that. Um, some of the urban ones don't use it as much, but I think it's still out there.
But, and, and the reason I ask, my son graduated, it was just twenty eighteen, and his best friend is, and excited to become an educator. Elementary ed was shocking me, because he's a wonderful mathematician, and I tried to convert him over. But, um, I, if it exists, if we could bring it back, I, I do think that would help with maybe some of our teacher shortage, if kids could go back to that and realize the importance and the value of being an educator. Uh, it's something I'd like to see.
Um, and like I said, we, we network with a lot of systems, and they're coming up with some very creative ideas. And we're looking to share, but we have people who say that they're gonna try to find money to actually pay for a three-year college, for some education.
Well, let me tell you, not to cut you off, but what's helping this young man, because, you know, he's one of our recent graduates, um, coming back, working over the summer, and I think maybe assisting with summer school is also helping him. I mean, and it doesn't, I don't think y'all pay, we don't pay very much, but it's the experience, it's, um, learning the strategies and keeping that momentum and that interest going. And that's what I really just admire about, you know, even though he's the only kid I know, but I just see the enthusiasm um, in him just waiting to go out there and po, possibly walk into one of our classrooms, so.
Dr. Coleman, Dr. Coleman, did you have something?
I would like to ask, um, Kim, if you can, talk about this, because this is outside of MPS, but uh, the state has changed, went back and changed the way you can retire and how many years you have to work and what that is. And so it's not as enticing, and so now, a lot of the superintendents have gotten together. There is a committee that's working to change that back so that our retirement, uh, system is more enticing than it used to be. I mean, than it has been the last time in a year, three, four.
As anyone whose employee is brand new, becomes a tier two employee. And that means that you can't, for example, the number of sick days that I have, I could convert that into a year towards service. That no longer exists for tier two employees. Um, the age limit has increased for them. So those things are there. Um, and we're hoping that they will look at that and make some modifications as well.
Well, that is, that is up in the state legislature this year, so.
Okay.
If you go on a legislative day with AASB, we can all be advocates for changing that.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? What a great, what a great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Watts?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, uh, members of superintendent, I'd be very appreciative. Um, you should have the board your financial statement for the month of December. Of course, uh, December represents the third month of the fiscal year, which means that will be the end of the first quarter. And looking at our fund balance, we, we ended, um, March, not March, but I meant December. December, uh, for twenty-two point three million dollar fund balance. As you know, we're required, uh, by the state to have a one-month fund balance. This is about eighteen point eight million dollars.
I gotta give you a cheer.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Our expenses are at twenty-five percent. Of course, that would, uh, be, um, uh, three months of the fiscal year, we represent twenty-five percent. So we're happy about that as well. Um, I'm sure many of y'all have heard or have read about Governor Ivey's, uh, State of the State address. And, um, we're, are happy to hear that she has proposed at least a three percent, uh, pay raise for teachers. So we're glad to see that, um, there seemed to be some effort of, uh, noticing that teachers do need to be, uh, incented by this, um, kind of, that's what Kim was just stating. Um, I was talking with Bernard earlier, and he was telling me about that there's been a shortage in relation to teachers, uh, people majoring, students majoring in education, um, in the state of Alabama. And I think this tier two, which I think, um, someone just mentioned, mentioned, mentioned that just a second ago. I think that has something to do with the two. So we're hoping that the state legislature will address, um, this tier two retirement system, uh, for our state as well. But we are glad to hear, um, that they are pushing, um, to, to, um, I guess to incentivize our teachers, uh, with pay raises. But we do need, um, we do need.
Mr. Watts, before you move on, um, I read the bill today, the, um, education bill that the governor is proposing, and it had it broken down, I'm sure you've seen it, it had it broken down with all of the districts, school districts in the state, and how much money it would mean to each district. Um, and I believe that to Montgomery County, it's about fourteen million dollars.
Yes, that's what they call the, um, the ETL. These are dollars that the state is allocating now to assist school districts, uh, with some renovations. But these are one-time funded, of course, we got about, way around nine million dollars last year. Seven point nine million, like seven point three million last year, and this year it'll be about fourteen million dollars. Um, of course, if the legislature approves that. Of course, again, you wanna keep in mind that those are one-time.
Right, right.
So it would help us, um, do a lot of things with roofs, uh, HCSs, and several of the other issues that we're, that we're having. Um, we'd love to see at some point, um, that we align items in the budget where.
Yeah, that would be good.
Every year.
Yeah.
But of course, um, with so many needs in education, of course, transportation funding, um, we still need increases there. Um, teacher, teacher raises, still need increases there to even be, um, to be competitive to several of the other states, not just, um, not just in the nation, but even in the southeast, so. They have a lot to do, um, I guess they help fund and support education. But we are thankful about for that fourteen million dollars. If the legislature does approve that, so, but yes. Um, again, um, our expenses are running about twenty-five percent, which again, is about three, is about three months of the fiscal year, we're running at about twelve. Um, also in the financial statement, uh, you also have the explanation of financial data. Just a brief overview, uh, from the CFO, snapshot analysis, um, just a quick overview of our revenues and expenditures and the percentages. Uh, you have a monthly and annual comparison of revenues and expenditures, as well as a statement of cash flow. Also, we have the, uh, F statements, which is our combined balance sheet, which basically states our financial position as of December, which began, uh, fund balance of twenty-two, twenty-three million dollars, and a combined statement of revenues, expenditures, and, uh, and fund balance, which basically is our income statement. And we return to the second tab on snapshot analysis. We do see our total revenues at about fifty-eight million dollars as of December, total expenditures at about fifty-five million, or fifty-five point eight million dollars as of December, and any fund balance of about twenty-two million dollars. million, and I'm looking at in the actual column. And there you see our revenues as a percentage of our budget is about 26%, uh, expenditures at about 25%. So we are happy that our expenses are running within our budget. Uh, we are thinking that our expenses will run a little bit less by, by the end of fiscal year, based on some early analysis that we're doing, Madam President.
Any questions? I, I, um, I hope, I'm, I'm speaking to the media now, hi Krista. I hope that, more than anything, that every meeting, those numbers get out as to where we have come in a year. And I told Mr. Watts earlier, as we were leaving the county commission, um, I have no doubt that every time your wife comes home from the grocery store, that you check the receipt and make sure she didn't spend as much. But we owe so much to you and your, um, wisdom, and I am so grateful, because that was one of the areas that we have been very weak in. And I think this is real important to show the community, especially at where we are right now, what, what we have been talking about over the last year, um, is that they need to know that we have been accountable for these monies, and that, um, we are really trying and cutting back. So I really applaud your efforts and all that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I, I, I'll sit down, but I'll be remiss if I did not say that, you know, I really, really appreciate y'all, that, that hard job that this board and this superintendent is doing too. Because at the end of the day, the superintendent has to make some tough recommendations to the board, and the board has to approve those recommendations. So I think a lot of credit goes both to the superintendent and to the board, uh, for doing the things that you guys do as well.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
Right. And a lot of things that the two of you have done, I mean, you made it, I mean, you cut them, but you didn't make them feel like you had cut, cut, really cut them, where they would bleed, so to speak. So they were willing to do some of the things that you had asked them to do, because you showed them why we needed to do it. It's one thing to say, we need to do it, but when you can sit down and point to the figures and show why this is being done, it's easier for, for them to take.
Thank you.
So, so today, we had an example where someone talked about, uh, the difference between, uh, trying to turn the Titanic. It takes a good while, several, several, several hours to get to turn the Titanic, but if you're in a little speedboat, you could turn it quickly. And so we've taken, I think, all of us together, we've, we've made some monumental strides in turning the Titanic. And we've done it, I think, in a short amount of time, much shorter than you normally would see happening, I think, in a school system anywhere. It's, it happened really quickly, but we've had a lot of support and a lot of cooperation from the people on the schools, the principals and everybody. We've talked to them about what we have to do and why, and why we can't do things the way we used to do it for a while, and, and hopefully, things will get back to where we can be, uh, you know, more on a level playing field. But, um, just because of intervention and all that, we had to try to meet those expectations and meet them quickly.
Well, that's how you eat an elephant, one bite at a time, and that's what you've been doing.
All right, um, at this point, I'm going to adjourn us, but we're going to reconvene immediately. So this meeting is over. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, February 25th. This meeting is adjourned, and in just a moment.
Yeah, you just take a minute.
We're gonna, we'll take a five-minute break. Be right back. Can we get an approval of this agenda, please?
Madam Pres-
You go on.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, a show of hands. Okay. Mary, you want to do this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You know I do.
Um, we're to receive as information, um, the revised resolution to the Montgomery County Commission regarding the ad valorem tax. I, I would like to say that this last week, we, we passed a resolution asking for a nine-mil The leaders of the city and the leaders of the county commission approached me and said, that's really not quite enough. And they have, um, pledged to put full force into helping us achieve this, and they have asked that we ask for a 12-mil increase in the ad valorem tax as opposed to a nine-mil. So that's the history behind it. They have come to us and asked, and as most of us were at the county commission meeting today, they were very, um, positive toward helping us get there. So that's the, that's the history behind it. Dr. Moore?
Um, so what, what I did in preparation for this is to simply revise the resolution that we approved last week, and change it from nine to a 12-mil increase, which say, takes it up to 22. The one we signed last week said 19. So an additional 12 would take it to 22, so that's what this resolution says, and that's what goes to the county commissioners, and then they, in turn, allow us to have a, uh, public hearing, and then we get it to the legislators, and then they do their thing, and hopefully, we can at some point get it on the ballot.
So that the voters can approve it, I hope.
Uh, since we approved the last resolution, should we not withdraw that resolution?
We can withdraw that, and then I think I have on this one revised.
Vote on this one.
Uh, yeah, so however you want to do it, repeal the other one.
Because you already have a resolution with the, uh, the one that we had, that we approved, the last resolution. So you would have, according to your minutes, you would have two resolutions floating out there. So just withdraw the one that we approved and approve this one.
Okay. So the first recommendation.
Is to withdraw.
Is to withdraw the, uh, the previous resolution, uh, repeal it and replace it with, can we do two in one?
Let's withdraw this one first.
Withdraw that one, all in, so you'll get, see who's in favor of that.
All right. Do we, we have a recommendation?
Madam President, I move that we accept the recommendation from our superintendent to re, withdraw the resolution that we had approved at our last meeting.
A second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor, a show of hands? Okay, that passes. And.
Okay, so now we are, we are recommending the approval of the revised resolution? Or just, we want to call it revised?
You're going to approve this resolution as is, the recommendation as it's stated.
Okay, so we're going to recommend approval of the res- resolution to the Montgomery County Commission regarding the ad valorem tax for an additional 12 mils.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the resolution to the Montgomery County Commission regarding the ad valorem tax for an additional 12 mils.
A second. Any discussion?
Um, I do have a question for, for Mr. Watts. We, we know that the nine mils was going to generate an additional 20, about $25 million, so this extra three, do, I know you do math in your sleep, so can you tell us how much more that would be?
We're projecting it'll be about $33 million annually.
Wow. Annually.
Annually.
So awesome. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, all those in favor, with a show of hands?
Six.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes. And before you leave, if you could just sign this document, that would be helpful. Our next meeting date again is February 25th, and we are adjourned.